Thank you all. Hope you enjoyed your time together, getting caught up and visiting. And let's give the Community House a round of applause for a fabulous launch. We have a rather unusual agenda today by design, but we are going to take a bit of a privilege and modify it a little bit. We're going to delay the chancellor report until after we hear the committee reports and consider the consent agenda items. And so we will come back after these reports and then go from there. We have a couple of critical votes coming up and from the nominating committee as well as from the F A H R. So at this time, Marjorie, if we can turn it to the items.
Yes, and I need to pull up my policy 2100. But the draft minutes are imposed in the packet for informational, and the draft minutes came from our August 15 meeting right before the great beginning of the school year. And we hope they'll be good enough to be approved in the November 9 meeting, and I will think about you guys.
Have a motion to approve the executive committee minutes?
So moved here.
So moved, the second? And all in favor, say aye. All righty. Thank you. Well, the draft is approved. I blocked that out.
Thanks. I didn't quite, I didn't, I thought I had five minutes to it at least. So in 2100, I am going to be looking for the general counsel to help walk me through this information. In the informational packet, it talks about section 202 and the changes that are recommended from a policy perspective. I would sort of like, have you highlighted the impact of what we're doing?
Sure. So every year, the executive committee is charged with reviewing our bylaws and to see if there are any changes to be made. They can't make the changes. Those changes don't need to be made by the board. And one change that we used to have to make in this year has to do with section 202, which is the special and emergency meetings. And the notice provisions that were in that section originally really didn't work out or make much sense in terms of timing of how these special and emergency meetings would be scheduled. So we've rewritten that provision. It matches more now with provisions, similar provisions among the sister institutions, excuse me. So it's really just a technical change regarding notice of these meetings. And while we were considering that change, it came up at the executive committee meeting that in section 103, the names of the standing committees were outdated and did not really match the names of those committees as they exist today. So they recommend that you change those to bring them into compliance with the current committees that exist now. So the executive committee considered these changes and voted to recommend them to the board for its approval.
And do I have a motion to make those changes that are recommended by the executive committee? So, thank you. All in favor?
Great. All right. Hugh Holston and Tom Leoni's absence today. I understand you're going to give the highlights of the deep committee report.
Yes. From the distance education and extended programs committee, we had a wonderful subcommittee meeting, and I'll cover our highlights as an outcome. First, by the end of the 2016-17 school year, we had 1,293 middle and high school students from 93 counties and had at least one NCSSSM residential or distance education course on their high school transcript. So that's really pretty incredible. We also reached more than 21,500 students and nearly 4,000 teachers through direct products and services in the 2016-2017 school year. From a digital standpoint, our outreach continues to grow at about 15% per year. We tracked 19,000 individual additions to our video playlist, which is an indication that these videos are being assigned in classes or used in a series by students for academic preparation, which is exactly what we want them to do. Also want to say thanks for the hard work and determination of our library staff and with support from the I T S. Our students in the I V C courses are not able to access the same library databases as any NCSSSM students, so we brought them up to parity. We also have several new online courses in production for the spring to include Race, Ethics, and Leadership, Organic Chemistry, and Entrepreneurship. Our I V C program also seeks to grow enrollments this spring by adding additional offerings of honors computer science and also introducing the honors robotics to our course catalog. Moving on to the summer accelerator, another successful year. This year, we served roughly 450 students, which is about a 25% increase over last year, and operating for the first time summer programs on two campuses simultaneously with the addition of the Brevard College. And a lot of thanks goes to Paige Lamel for helping out with that effort. We also doubled the number of underrepresented minority students participating in the accelerator from 31 in 2016 to 68 in 2017. And if you include the students participating in other programs supported by the summer program team, we're now supporting nearly 300 underrepresented minority students. In 2018, we plan to serve at least 500 students on those two campuses. And let me also add that in addition to the summer accelerator, our summer programs include our Step Up to STEM, a first robotics training camp serving students in underserved areas of the state, a camp for the visually impaired and blind, and also the E M C STEM program. That's the Eastern North Carolina STEM program that's been highlighted by Grayson Cooper, who was here earlier. He might be gone now, in partnership with the North Hampton County Schools and also with our regular other programs. So we're engaged with accelerator other summer programs. The trend lines are good, and we expect them to stay in good stead. Any questions or thoughts?
Thank you.
Asena, back to you, Tom.
Thank you. Lisa, institutional advancement?
Great. We had a wonderful discussion this past Tuesday, really centered around two of our strategic initiatives. The first initiative was to increase and diversify our resources of revenue and our resources in general. And the second was strategy number five, to improve communications and public relations and marketing. So the three things I was going to just highlight from that discussion today are centered around those strategic initiatives. First of all, before I even go there, I want to welcome Stephanie Bass to the Institutional Advancement Committee. We're really excited about having her on board. And in addition, we have the new executive director. I'd like Brock just to say a few words about and introduce her to our board.
Sure. We are really pleased in Advancement to have grown our development team and led by April Horton, who is from Rhode Island, Lenore. And April comes to us, sort of in reverse. She came most recently from Carnegie Mellon University, where she was pivotal in their major gifts initiative there. And joining April, who's down here, is another named Clark Hathaway, and also Lauren Wittings, whom you know. And together, they form a unit. April's our executive director of development, Lauren is major gifts, and Clark is annual funding. So we have a gift officer team that is specialized in each of those lines of business and really positions us well for the coming capital campaign. And April, would you like to stand up and greet everybody?
Yeah, welcome.
You're an opportunity to meet with you all. I'm looking forward to the upcoming campaign, and this is such an inspiring time to be a part of. Looking forward to working with you.
We're glad to have you. Thank you.
Happy to have you.
The second item is that we're also getting ready to post the position for the director of communications. There's a great need in that space across a lot of different areas, and foundation in particular, but a lot of different areas within the school. And so we've shifted and kind of readjusted with having different folks take pieces of that role. But there's lots to do, and there's definitely a need for the director of communications to come on board and hit the ground running. So Brock will be posting that as soon as possible, within the next week or less, to get that done.
Also, not with us at the moment, but Sophie Williams has been our interim director for the last few months, and has done a great job. So if you could just see her do her work.
Absolutely. And then the third, last but not least, April mentioned it, we're getting geared up for a comprehensive and a holistic campaign, capital campaign. And that is exciting. And we are just looking forward to engaging all of the board in this huge undertaking. It is going to be fabulous. And just very, very excited about it, and just need all hands on deck to really make it extremely successful. As we've heard, there's lots of needs to be filled on both campuses. So this is going to, you're going to hear more and more about that in the coming weeks and months, and certainly at the board meetings. Any questions?
Very good. Eric, how about E P P C?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we had our first meeting of the year on Tuesday, and I'd also like to take a moment to recognize Eric Troll. I think Eric left. Okay, so Eric is a new member to E P P C, and he was able to join us on Tuesday. I'll try to just hit the highlights. We basically talk in our committee in four areas. One is the faculty senate update that Ashton usually gives. And the one thing that came out of that that I found interesting this time is that there's, faculty senate's been working with the academic honesty council on a way to demonstrate for students in a very tangible, and in this case, visual way, about how much collaboration, how much teamwork is allowed on certain projects. And so academic honesty brought forth a recommendation to the faculty senate, but the faculty senate was not entirely convinced of that particular. There were still some questions. So they did not endorse that proposal at this time. Is that accurate, Ashton?
It isn't. It was more because having a color coded system that would imply what you could or could not do, a lot of people would choose the fuzzy gray option for a lot of it. And so it kind of outlined more how we have to explain to the students about what appropriate communication, collaboration, citation, all those different aspects. And in some ways, it did open the conversation up a little bit better. And so we have more work to do.
We also got a staff senate report from Crystal. And at this time, they have now added E H R A staff to the staff senate, which had not been done previously. And so now they are looking at their concerns for this year, items of interest to discuss. And the top three that came out of that were professional development opportunities, cultural diversity, training for the staff. And what I thought was interesting, and we spent a good deal of time in the committee talking about, was mental health support for staff. We spend an awful lot of time talking about it in relation to our students, but don't spend enough time talking about it maybe in relation to our staff. So I thought that was a good conversation to have in our committee. Katie gave us an update on how the school year is off to a great start. Admissions program will open on October 15. So far, they've visited, I think I got the number right, there was 155 visits that they've made so far.
Encountered.
Encountered, yes. The family day went well. STEM Hall of Fame was great. The Family Day went well, STEM Hall of Fame was great, was a fantastic event, so everything has gone well in that regard. And then from Terry, we got our Student Life Report, and I think the biggest things to come out of this were that, I thought some things changed a little bit around College Day this year. We had a successful College Day on the 22nd, which was also the day of the gala. But they rolled in a financial aid seminar on Saturday during Family Weekend, and they said it was actually better attended by having it that way, so something they may want to consider. Lori Hackney talked about the fact that we had an intern in counseling to give them some help for 24 hours a week. And then Terry just kind of updated us on the cultural, Campus Culture Climate and Diversity Council, which we now know is referred to as 3CDC. And so, and we just took, the makeup of that, it's 15 employees and 15 students, and they're going to focus on a deep dive of their assessment and their program and training for this year. So that was the highlights of our meeting.
Questions and comments for Eric and EPPC, Ashton?
Oh, that's a fact. I'm thinking of being part of that diversity training as well.
The faculty?
The faculty absolutely. That's actually one of the, Terry defined me, because one of the primary things that that committee, 3CDC, is, has on their agenda is to plan out that community-wide diversity training, which is, you know, there's a lot of things that may do as the whole community, adults and students, and then some that may be targeted specifically to different members of the community.
And I would say that is one of our goals this year, is to develop that, and not just develop a one-time only training, but something that is, something that's ongoing, that can board essentially adding to their school visits on the annual.
Anything else for EPPC?
Thank you. Mark Morgan has been called away professionally, and I was fortunate to be able to join the FAHR Committee for their call meeting on the 19th of September, so I'm going to hit the highlights of the meeting. And first, Ian Collin has hit the mother load with three new FAHR members that have joined them with new Board of Trustees. We've got Robert and Geneva and Earl, who have joined the FAHR, which is great. That committee has been a good, strong committee, but having some additional members from the trustees is great, so thank you to each of the new members, from Committee Chair Morgan as well. With it being the first meeting of the year, Robert and his team, Joyce and others, Leah, took the opportunity to use that kind of as a new member board orientation as well. And one of the things that's great that that committee has done is they've got kind of a quarterly calendar of major and special reports that kind of come up, a kind of a year in review. So they took a chance to, opportunity to go through and highlight those documents that are in there, very helpful. As far as routine updates and record, Joyce Bondi, the chief, the school's chief audit officer, gave an activity report on the audit. This information is all in your materials that you received prior to the meeting from the 2016-17 year, and where really each one of those internal audit items stands in terms of completion, continuation, or no longer needed. Leah Engelbreit, the Director of Budget and Finance, presented the school's financial report as of June 30th and discussed the status of the school's cash basis receipts and spending for the 2017 year. Everything, again, as you can see in that report, is in line with what was expected, including the carryover funds from the General Assembly's special allocation for the Western Campus. Leah also presented the famous UNC Fit Report, the green, red, blue, or the green, the green yellow red report. And with some key staff positions having been filled, great progress has been made there, and they're in good shape now of meeting the targeted dates and turnaround times for reconciling bank statements and everything else. So that was a very positive update with the new staff folks that have been hired. Gary Covington was also with the group, the Director of Plant Facilities, and provided an update on the school's various construction and renovation projects. Again, that document is inside your materials that shows the percent of completion, what projects are there. Some of them are carryover projects where they were waiting for additional R&amp;R money to complete them. I think the big one is the roof replacement, I think is moving forward and on track, and that's a very positive thing relative to the repair and renovations. Our new board members did hear that we have about $40 million of unmet needs and repairs and renovations on the Durham campus that continues to be a priority for the school. In terms of the action items, the committee reviewed and discussed the proposed projects for the internal audit plan for this coming fiscal year. That is one of your consent agenda items that the committee's brought forward. They also reviewed the two proposed salary increase schedules for 2017, including the updated faculty salary schedule, as well as the schedule of EHRA non-faculty salary increases. When I finish my report, I'm going to ask for a motion to move the EHRA salary schedule that's not on the consent agenda item right now to the consent agenda item. So we'll come back to that. They all comply with the legislative increases, and the Chancellor had done a cover memo with that document that came to us as board members explaining the changes there with, I think, each group, an average proposed increase around 2.86% for the faculty and 2.9% for the EHR, is kind of the, non-faculties is kind of the bottom line. And again, all of those items are on the consent agenda item. That's the highlight of the committee report. I don't know if there's any changes or additions from any members of the committee. Yes?
There was one change made subsequent to our meeting.
One change in the salary schedule that was changed?
Was not eligible or something?
Yeah, there was an employee who was hired after July 1st, and so they're not eligible for the increase, which that modification was made to, to the increase sheet that was, the committee had looked at and actually lowered the amount of money necessary.
And that communication that you sent out was also in the attached, I know I read it, I don't remember, it was in the board package?
Went to the FAR committee.
So it went to the FAR committee, so thank you, Geneva. Very good. So before we see if there's any other questions, because I'd first ask for a motion to add to the consent agenda item, the approval of the EHRA salary schedule.
Seconded.
Motion seconded by Eric. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That will be now a consent agenda item. Other comments from the committee? Mark regretted that he couldn't be here, but he will see us the next time. With that said, we're going to move to the consent agenda items. Their list is there for you. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items by Eric? Seconded by Alan. Any discussion on the consent items, hence their consent items? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Mr. Chancellor, it's your turn. Ooh!
Yes, we did leave that out. That's a big one. We did leave that one out, didn't we? That is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Eric, Chairman, the nominating committee for us, and I'll let Eric give the nominating committee's report.
So we did, the nominating committee met, as we've discussed today, that we're sad that Marjorie will be leaving us, but that leaves us with a vacancy as the vice chair. And so the board was asked to put forth names, and one name was put forward, and that was Tom Looney. So the nominating committee discussed it when we met, I don't remember exactly.
The 19th.
The 19th. And that name was unanimously approved. So the nominating committee will now put forth the vote for Tom to assume the vice chair.
You have a motion coming from the nominating committee to approve Tom Looney to be the new vice chair, not to take Marjorie's place.
Right.
He made that motion.
Even though I really don't want, no, no, no.
No more taking Marjorie's place.
I would love for Tom to be the new vice chair.
Motion been made, seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded by Lisa. All those that want to discuss it. Tom would be great, right? All those in favor, say aye. Thank you so much.
Tom? If I were, I'd vote aye.
You missed the meeting, right?
All right. Thank you, Chancellor.
All right, so I will now go get to my report. And before I get into the slides that we have, each of these meetings, we provide you with an update on what some of our students, faculty, staff, our accomplishments. So you have that with you, the Accolade Awards document, and yeah, this is, as much as me saying to just give you examples of what happens at the school and what goes on, what the accomplishments happen, also, I'll argue with some information that you can share about the school and the community. Draw your attention to one item on the very last page, the back of that back page, is one of our own trustees was our speaker at Convocation this year. Jabar Bennett spoke at our convocation and did a fantastic job. It couldn't, we obviously couldn't foretell the future, so we didn't plan it this way, but it was, our convocation happened right on the heels of events in Charlottesville and with Jabar's role at Northwestern and what he does in providing leadership around diversity for that campus. I mean, it was, it was well timed, his speech was fantastic, and so it was a great way, quite frankly, to start the school. And so give a lot of kudos to Jabar for that, so just wanted to point that out to you. So I'll just hop into my presentation and try to cover a few things about the start of the school, highlight some more than others, but if questions arise on any, stop me and I'll spend more time on it. Again, you already hit this, but about the summer programs, this was our most student-served ever in total numbers, as well as the number of different programs. And as was mentioned, we branched out to another campus. And, you know, if you think about in the strategic plan back in 2012, when this idea of running revenue generating summer programs came about, that was just an idea, and then, you know, we had the opportunity with Melissa, her team, bringing on Jen, and Jen's now brought on Julia, and, you know, we, they created a small business at that time. And, you know, we're not in the business of creating businesses, but we have done an unbelievably good job under Jen's leadership. And so if you just look at the results, and part of the goal of this, starting this program was to help make our summer programs as a whole self-sufficient and, you know, have these programs help fund the programs that we run, that you see the long list up here that are either grant funded or serve our unique mission of outreach into schools. We talked a little bit about onboarding students like the Summer Bridge and Summer Leadership Programs. And so we're on our way to being able to do that. As a matter of fact, this year, proceeds from last year's Summer Accelerator helped to fund the Student Leadership and, or Step Up to STEM, I believe it was, program which serves rising ninth grade underrepresented minority students who are talented in STEM. And so as you can see from the results from this year, we're well on our way to being able to even do more than that. And so I don't know if Jen wants to make any comments at all about this, or anyone else, or Paige?
I just think it's worthy of note that we've had a 10 and a half times increase in four years for this small business, and I think anybody who's in small business would love to see that kind of growth in their endeavors. So I'm just so proud of what Jen's been able to accomplish with the, for the school, and I think the potential here is really endless, and it's very, very exciting for NCSSM.
It is, it's, thank you for putting it that way. That was a great one.
Well, we're all happy.
And so even beyond that, I think it's helped to expose students to NCSSM who now think about enrolling in school and applying for the school and then those programs. And so as a matter of fact, I believe Eric's, one of his kids came to the Accelerator program this year and was already looking forward to next year. I don't know if you guys want to say anything or not? You don't?
Yeah, well, the science, you know, how this is a pedophile for students to get introduced to us, it also demonstrates this year by going to Brevard, and provide quality programs outside Durham. So I think it's a good and just one, and we'll be able to start off things here.
Great, so it's been, been a huge, huge success in many ways for the school, so just wanted to highlight that.
Just adding, I teach in Accelerator, it's a fantastic opportunity, I very much enjoy it. Always keep in mind that we're adding more of these things, and some things like IT was pushing to doing a lot of things to fix computers, get people all these accounts, take them off. They weren't able to necessarily do as much work focused as they were planning, and so our success breeds new opportunities. And so, but always just keep it in mind that there's a pressure on staff that is not felt on the faculty in the same way and all that, and so always keep that in mind as we grow. And I'm glad everyone else cited some of them too, because that's exciting. But the excitement is how do we do it as well as we can, and I know there has been a lot of combinations to help with staff and spread that out, but just always keep that in mind that it is a change that we're growing into of what the summer workflow is. And so I'm always going to bring that up.
Right on cue, I knew when he raised his hand, I said, I'm a check, I can tell, I can say what I have to say. But Ashton's exactly right. I mean, it is logistically challenging, you know, because we do work in the summer to the facility and our facilities team. And as a matter of fact, you know, Sarah Schumaker, who's out here who coordinates our summer research program, which this year was double the number of kids, had that opportunity than in the past, and she helped coordinate with Mike Newbauer and our student life, a celebration of our facilities and housekeeping staff just this week for their, for their work, because it really does put extra, but then we do bring in extra cleaning crews, the contract to come in and take some of that load off, but they have to, they're all summer long, you know, shuffling one hall to the next as we bring in, because you don't bring in one group of students and have them come into a room, some other just group of students just left without cleaning it. So there's a lot of logistical challenges. And one other benefit that I think that often doesn't get mentioned for the summer programs is the opportunity for those members of our faculty and staff who are not working in the summer typically might want to, to have those opportunities, like Ashton said, to work and maybe teach a new course or something that they're interested in doing and also to earn additional income, which is a great opportunity for them as well, which most of, I don't know if I'm going to say most, but probably 75% of the folks that work in our summer programs are faculty or staff at the school.
I was just going to comment and add to what Ashton was saying. One, we put all of our committee documents in front of you, also we came back from once you saw that. So you'll see the report that Jen was able to gather up during the summer that shows when he saw the pressure comes, even though it's not here, but with IT, he provided money from somewhere, so we have IT hire and additional coverage. So that did not add on to IT in any unexpected type of way. Also in there, you'll be able to see the that amount of money that's being reinvested in our faculty. So how much money faculty members who are teaching classes and are able to add on a couple of hundred dollars as well as, we hire a great deal around my, with some of the service. So we're supporting housekeeping by giving them additional funds for a student than they normally would accept by a residential student, because we know that we're putting those added pressures on. So, you know, Jen makes it very clear that not only in verbal appreciation, but in trying to use that money to reinvest that faculty in the school, both in programs and faculty and in departments, so we see the pressures. And then we also have a great opportunity with the new department director, who is going to hopefully alleviate one of our largest burdens, which is our hiring so many contracting people over the summer, is that she has us looking at a system that will enable us to work with an outside entity to be able to adapt, and help take some of the pressures off of our end of business office as well.
Thanks for pointing this out. And then just to add a little few photos from the summer, you know, kids doing various things on campus, off campus, those students in the top left were in China competing in the competition, humanities research on the ride, and kids up in Appalachian State for the Sustainability Conference, so they were on campus and all over doing interesting things. And then I mentioned, thinking about the start of the school year, just a couple of photos, and there's, I jumped the gun on my comments, there's Jabar right up there at Convocation, and those photos were all from Convocation, which was a great way to start the school year. And then this fabulous and once in a lifetime maybe kind of opportunity of experiencing the solar eclipse. the solar eclipse, which was academic programs did an amazing job of planning activities on campus for our students. And I think they bought like 900 and some pairs of viewing glasses. And so we had the whole community out watching the eclipse. And I'll have to say, from a personal standpoint, it exceeded expectations. I thought it was going to be more hype than cool, and it was more cool than hype. For sure. I really was amazed by the experience. And as you can see, look at this booth, she was too. Somebody captured that amazing photo. Pretty cool. So it was really a special, kind of a new way to start the school year. So leading into that, you know, we would be nothing without our students, because that's what we do. And so they moved in, as you can see, and are off to a good start. And just to give you an overview of, you know, the admissions process, you know, we're already talking about the class of 2020 at this point, but the class of 2019 is just settling in. So I'm going to introduce Rob Andrews and Katie O'Connor, if they have any, Katie wants to add to. And they're going to sort of walk us through these slides about the, you know, most of the process, because there's been some change by necessity. Obviously, as you know, Dr. Mason left to take an opportunity down in South Carolina, which we greatly miss her. But you know, Rob and the team have stepped up and are taking the opportunity to think about what we do as well, which has been great. So I'll turn it over to Katie and Rob.
So I'll just give a quick update before Rob takes over the slides, just to let you know that, you know, we miss Latita terribly. And we are, as Chancellor Roberts just mentioned, that the admissions team has hopped on board and they are doing an amazing job, and what you'll hear about. I also wanted to let you know that you might have heard this already, but our registrar, Kathleen Allen, and the assistant registrar, Wanda Munn, they are both retiring December 31st. So after I got up off the floor and was able to, you know, process all this information. So one thing that this, we are trying to look at this as an opportunity and to really look at the, what the registrar's office does, what admissions does, see if there's already things that they do together, see if there's other synergy that can happen. And I'm really grateful to our new HR director, Carla. She is doing something called a desk audit. So we have given her 12 positions of folks in those areas and actually one or two positions in DEEP, because DEEP has a position that is not called a registrar, but acts like a registrar. So she's looking at all those positions and is going to give us a recommendation or two, just to see are we being most efficient? And as we move toward Morganton, what are some things we, maybe we should be looking at a different structure and so forth? So that's currently happening, and that's why you haven't seen Latita's position build so quickly. We're taking it a little slower, especially knowing what's coming in December with Kathleen and Wanda moving toward retirement, just to see what are some creative ways we might be able to move forward in the registrar area, the admissions area, potentially enrollment services area, and include online. So you know, once we get a plan, of course, we will update you and you will see positions posted, but that's where we're at right now. And I just wanted to let you know that we haven't forgotten to post it, but we're just doing some behind the scenes thinking about it right now. And so I'm going to turn it over to Rob, so he can talk to you about what the team's been working on.
Thank you. And recruitment has begun. Actually, Ms. Cathy Parks is in Vertie County today, Andrew is in Harnett County, and I've been out here in the western area. Everything west of here is already covered, it's in those 155 schools in 48 counties. So we are moving forward. We didn't miss a beat as far as recruitment has been concerned. We got on the road the last week of August and have been visiting schools. It does require one of us to be in the office a little bit more to cover some of the roles and responsibilities of meetings and things with Latita. But we're very excited about, you know, the chance to see where our vision can grow. And she really did a great job of preparing us, you know, for when she wasn't going to be here any longer. So we can watch the next. We've got some numbers for you guys. Well, first of all, with our programs this year, we do have four open houses, well, three open houses for our high school applicants. These are informational programs where faculty and staff do presentations, we cover the admissions process, and then there's a tour at the end of the program. We'll also have a middle school open house, which is February 3rd, and that will force Wanda with the Native American Pow Wow that afternoon. So all participants who come to the morning program get free admission to the Pow Wow. We are already reaching out and getting those vendors for the Pow Wow. We have dancers, we have performers, and really looking at how we can revitalize Pow Wow moving forward to include Native American recruitment here in North Carolina. Discovery Day schedule, all applicants, if you don't know, must attend if you're a resident or applicant, you must come to a discovery day where you get an information session, you get a tour campus, but there's also that math test that is part of the admissions process. So we will have three discovery days, two sessions each day, one in the morning, one in the afternoon, where they will test. And we will bring all our applicants to campus during that time period. Once selection is done, the selection committee will meet the last month, or last week of March this year, review applications. Notification will be the first week of April, and then the students will come. The first welcome day is the main welcome day. Last year, for the first time, we did our makeup welcome day rather than doing it on a weekday. We took another Saturday to have a second welcome day for students who couldn't make the first welcome day. The second welcome day is also generally when the waitlist students will come. Because you know, at that point, you know, we want them to come in, be able to do the testing. And we really try to make the day as welcoming and accommodating for both groups. And that's, you know, a tough process, because you have one group who's, you know, super excited, they're finalists, and you have the other group who are cautious, you know, they're a little disappointed, they want to finalist, but they, you know, are still excited that they potentially could be finalists. So bring one on that day. We do have a goal with the, you know, strategic plan of increasing enrollment for students from rural and low wealth communities. This has actually been something we've been doing before this was even a goal. We've always tried to reach out to those communities, whether it is through the high school recruitment, middle school recruitment. We are actually hitting twice as many middle schools now than we did five years ago, to try to not only prepare those students for our process, but their college process in general. We look at it as a chance to do outreach, and even if a student decides in the 10th grade they're not going to apply to one of our programs, we want them to be preparing for college at that point. And that's something Latita, and still been us before she left, that was always one of our missions, was how can we give back to these communities even if they don't apply to the school of science and math? So a lot of those middle school programs are 50% science and math, 50% preparing for college. We targeted different presentations towards underserved, or underrepresented schools and, you know, tried to increase that outreach. If you have programs that you want us to come into in your home communities, whether that's a scouting program, a church program, please let us know. We'd be more than happy to come to your area and speak to those students. Many of the board members have been fantastic in supporting. Paige was, you know, helping so much in Transylvania County, reaching out not only to the public schools, even to some of the other programs there. So we've had that support in the past. New partnerships, we're starting a lot of new programs, trying to reach out to these students, so through the borough's welcome, outreach to Edge Town, Halifans and Vax, Vance and Warren. Ms. Cathy Parks, just last week was at the Hawassee Pony Tribal School. It is a charter school in Warren County where she went and spoke to the students. You know, we're collaboration with Black Youth Unites, it's a new thing that we are starting with some of our African-American alumni that Matty has kind of put together. Working and mentoring with local organizations. So not only do admissions go out and do presentations, we're actually volunteering in the community, doing outreach through some of the community organizations in the Durham area, especially those that reach Hispanic populations and some of our underrepresented populations in the local area. And then also potential collaboration with Black Girls Who Code. This goes along with some of the other programs we've been doing like WAM in the area and some other things that we've done throughout the years. And that's, you know, building on established relationships, revitalizing the Pow Wow, like I mentioned earlier, forming that middle school open house. And we're actually going to reestablish the Native American Advisory Council. And this was something that many years ago, we had at Science and Math led by Joe Lyles, and was instrumental in getting into those communities and getting students from those communities. So we're going to be inviting some of our former alumni that are in North Carolina to come back and help us plan the Pow Wow, help us reach out to those communities, try to get to communities we might not have reached before, especially like in the western part of the state, the Cherokee Nation. We're actually trying some things to get onto their tribal schools and getting into some of their programs. Also brainstorming new strategies, which is something we do all the time. This summer, we actually came out to Morganton and looked at the western, you know, looked at the school of death, looked at the Morganton potential campus, and we had a retreat out here and, you know, just trying to work with D1 different strategies and how we can reach more students during the course of the year. We can't at this point visit every middle school and high school. We really try as hard as we can, but with scheduling, with forms, you know, actually had a delay two weeks ago. I missed three schools in Buncombe County because they were closed with the hurricane when it came up through western North Carolina. So if anything we can do, we try to, you know, we're trying to do strategies. Right now, 608 residential students, 360 online, so that's a total of, you know, 1,040 students. And then we have the IBC enrollment, of course, through DEEP for this fall and the spring. We also try to use IBC if we can for recruitment to do presentations. This money actually went into a school last fall, and they asked me to come into this room, and it's just Jamie Lathan wanted to say hello to me. He was teaching class at West Iredell. So I went in and said hi to Jamie, a student. And that happens to us every once in a while. We'll have that happen when we have an IBC class and we're going into the school. We do have 93 out of 100 counties represented within the chief programs. That is not what we want as admissions office. We really every year have the goal of 100 counties and have at least a student from every county. That has not happened in my 16 years of admissions, and that's something I will accomplish before I leave someday. And many of those counties actually, I've been fortunate enough to go to all 100 counties in my 16 years. So it's really something we would love to see. And I think with the addition to the Morganton campus, I think that's something we probably accomplish with Morganton campus.
Of those southern counties we didn't have this year count, over your 16 years, how do the systems have?
Two of them are like, Graham County, we've had one student in 16 years, and that's Robbinsville. And it's not for lack of trying, their council actually has a pizza party and invites the top 15 to 20 students in the class to the pizza party. And I talked about the school, I talked about recruitment, you know, I talked about all the different options. And, you know, students seem excited, but what it is, it's a very heightened community. If you've ever been to Robbinsville, it's a little bit more secluded even than Murphy. You know, it's a little closer to us than Murphy. It's in kind of a, you know, geographic area where, you know, they're kind of nestled in a nice little valley there. The one student that we had from Robbinsville, their parents moved two years before from Atlanta. So they weren't bought into the community. You know, they were transplants within that community. Graham County is the other county that consistently not represented, and there's many factors. But Graham County, that's one of Matty's counties, and just traditionally, if you look at the entire 38 history here of the school, Graham County and Graham County only show up. The other counties are kind of hit or miss as well. I am proud to say Districts 10, Districts 11 in the mountains. Graham is the only one we don't have represented in western North Carolina. And one thing, before we go through the numbers, the numbers you'll see are the numbers on campus today. When we did initial selection this year, we're mandated 4% to 11% for each congressional district. We actually selected 6% to 10%. So that means we didn't hit minimum in any district, we didn't hit maximum in any district, because overall, the application pool this year was very strong. Also with the online program, in years past, anywhere from 30% to 50% of the online students, that would be their second choice. This year, that was, I don't think, any, in the initial selection. So you know, here's the residential numbers. I need to see these are reflected after bringing in students off the waitlist. But this is the first year we have used this congressional district map. As you know, the map's come and go with the politics of North Carolina. And one thing to highlight is, yes, District 4 is still the, you know, Raleigh Durham Chapel Hill, 300 applications, you know, you're going to have, you know, mid to upper 30s. District 1 has 37 students. That is, you know, mainly northeastern North Carolina. Northern Durham is also in there and well represented within there. But some of the other districts, District 3, very strong on the coast as well. Like I said, Districts 10 and 11, 27 and 25, we're actually closer to 30 in the initial selection. So some of the students, when they get ready to enroll, being further away from home, those are the students that might decline, and there is a decline survey or decline numbers later on within. So we were very proud of the numbers this year. This is the online class, so you can see well represented pretty much throughout the state. District 9 down a little bit. District 9 is Mecklenburg, and they kind of rolling all the way over to Lake, not as many applicants for the online program in that district, but still good numbers statewide within the online for this year. And this is the residential declines, like I said, not many declines throughout the process. This year, for the first time, we actually shortened our waitlist. In the past, we would do 45 males and 45 females. This year, it was in the mid 30s for the waitlist, because we weren't, we don't like to set students up for disappointment. You know, we're not creating a waitlist as a consolation prize. We tell applicants that when we go over applications with them after the process. We do try to do reviews for the students who did not get in. Sometimes it's very hard. In District 4, you have a 750, 750 on the SAT, and straight A's and, you know, but there's just not enough space.
These are the online declines. Again, this is down a lot lower. We have very few declines than the online program. And I really want to attribute that to the distance education department and to some of the initiatives we made. We now have online student ambassadors. So if you're in your community and you see a more of a doo-doo t-shirt with the catalyst on it, they are an online ambassador with covering statewide. We're in the process of selecting this year's junior online ambassadors. This week, I saw three in Henderson County that came to my presentations and talked to students. So seeing those students in the community, even when I went into one school this, two weeks ago, I saw three in CSSN t-shirts throughout the school that were online students. They came to the presentations to encourage fellow students to apply to the online program. So they're really helping us and promoting the school. These are the congressional district trends. One thing to note again is these districts have changed. I will tell you, we have students in Moore County doing backlifts, because they were no longer competing with Wake County in District 2. You know, so with some of the districts changing, I will say, as a non-political thing, these districts really do have much greater representation. We used to have that weird strange river of District 12 that ran from Mecklenburg County to Greensboro. And that district was always very low application lines, generally in the 30s or 40s. Now District 12 has kind of sunk into Mecklenburg County, it's northern Mecklenburg County, and we had 60 some applications from northern Mecklenburg County this year.
We now call that the congressional district of Mecklenburg.
Yes.
Just Mecklenburg.
And our recommendations, the admissions is for the last, since I've been at Science and Math with county, has been the number one represent county on campus. That will no longer be the case in two years. Because of that congressional district, because Mecklenburg is still so strong in 9, and now Wake is competing or orange again, Mecklenburg will be our most representative county if trends continue.
You can see exactly what Rob is talking about, particularly on this, if you look at Congressional District 12, huge increase in Congressional Districts 13 and 2, large decreases, because they used to be, Wake County used to be in 2, 13, 5, and 4, and now they're almost all in 4. So you can see the number of applicants declined and the enrollment declined from those, you know, once Wake County's pulled out of that. No, as Rob indicated, the total number of students went down, but the diversity of where those students are coming from is up, because it's not all one county.
And these are some of our enrollment attendance ethnicity-wise. We're very excited that over the last few years, our, you know, African-American numbers have come up. Now, the way we record numbers compared to the past, we have a lot more that are multiple or refused, so those students could be within any of these different lines. Of course, our Hispanic numbers are up again. Actually, Asian-American numbers are down a little bit, you know, so there is a portion more diversity within these classes. And also, tributes again to summer programs and, you know, just the exposure we have with students in those communities and trying to reach out to those communities. This is the online enrollment per congressional district, so you can see, like the chancellor mentioned, District 13 went way down because of how the district was redrawn. But, you know, what our Districts 2, District 3 on the coast is, you know, a large number of our online students where those students are really looking for more opportunities. And I can really, you know, talking to some students already, I have the Northeast, I tease everyone out of the pretty areas of North Carolina. I have the mountains, I have the Northeast, I have the one winged area. So, you know, talking to some of those students, some of the programs in Morganton are going to be the programs they're really going to want to come for, the ag programs, the sustainability and environmental programs. So I can see students leaving, you know, District 3 at home. And this is our online, again, with ethnicity, and again, we've had some increases. One of the reasons we're looking at revamping that powwow is to try to get those Native American numbers.
I noticed that District 8 had increased sharply, and the online program, is there any?
The redrawing.
But you just think the reason is just redrawing?
Absolutely. Moore County and Cabarrus County are now in that district, so you have two very strong. Moore County will send us a large number of applications, both presidential and online. Same thing with Cabarrus. We actually have some charter schools in Cabarrus County, like Lake Mormon Charter. They want to be the most represented school at the School of Science and Math. That is what they've told us. So, you know, they invite us in, they promote, and if a student does want to do residential and they're a strong student in their class, they're asking them to apply to the online program.
Interesting.
And it's the same way, Lincoln Charter here in District 10, actually visit both campuses. The Lincoln Charter, if you're not familiar, they're one school, but like in CSSTM, they have, they're going to have two campuses. They have one in Denver and one in, in, left, Lincoln, and those schools, they use it as a selling point for their school. They can grab the number of students that have accepted.
Rob, thank you.
Thank you.
Rob, and Rob, I kid, he's been all over the state of North Carolina multiple times, and so if you ever need any tips on where to go, what to do, I've heard of him, North Carolina barbecue spots.
Yes.
So, thanks, thanks for that. And, you know, I think probably by December-ish, at that meeting, we might have some recommendations around the, what we might be doing in terms of restructuring with admissions registrar and how those can help each other. So just quickly, you know, our legislative priorities that we went into, we talked about in May, what we were hoping for still at that time, and so this is kind of our scorecard if it were, in terms of how things ended up for us. We, one I'll point out here, no budget reductions again, which is a good thing. The UNC system as a whole was mostly spared. One of the things that changed this year at the last minute was how enrollment growth funding is being allocated. It used to be, you would submit your request, they would verify it, and the funding would come on the front end. And for us, that was really important because it allowed us then to staff the growth for our distance education programs and oftentimes create those courses to enroll by the spring semester, to realize those numbers. And this year, they changed, and you have to now submit your numbers of growth before they allocate the funding. So that's made it a little bit challenging for us, but our DEEP folks and academic programs have really worked to figure out how we can still realize some of our enrollment growth for this first fall semester, and then are planning for the spring semester where we can then verify. So it is a little bit different model for us and a little bit more difficult, I think, for us than a lot of university schools because we don't have the resources to kind of front the funding to establish those courses, assuming the money coming in on the back end. We're trying to do that as best we can now with some vacancies that we have to realize that the funding that we want to bring in so that we can do more that next year. Our R&amp;R funding and capital, there, you know, very, over the past number of years, very few capital projects have been funded. Our R&amp;R funding comes to the university, which was 60 million for our system, and, but of that 60 million, about 20 million was pulled out and for specially identified projects, like 10 million for a new business school at UNC Pembroke. So not really 60 million is being allocated out to the system as a whole. They have a formula. Our portion of that is a little over $1 million, as you can see. What we're hoping to try to do in relationship to the Morganton campus project that we just talked about is that to have that be one of those special projects that gets pulled out on the front end for this next year so that we can get that additional $15 million that we were talking about earlier. We talked about the salary increases a little while ago, and then the tuition grant was the other big item that was added in. Really, at the last minute, it was a priority of the university system. It didn't appear in the House budget, it didn't appear in the Senate budget, but it appeared in the final budget. And so what it did was allocate $1.5 million in funding for the class of 2018 for one year. So right now, it's not recurring, so the class of 2018, who went to the University of North Carolina System Schools, would get tuition up to $6,000 funded for that one year, 1819. Now, we do expect and are hoping that it will be come recurring in this upcoming short session budget. It's still a priority for the UNC system, and I know they're still working on it, so we're hopeful that in June, it would be added in so that the class of 2019 would get it in, 20 would get it, and then the class of 18 it would be recurring on, so just like it was in previous years when we had it. So that's where, that's sort of our scorecard for this past session. And as we talked about a little while ago, one of our big needs coming into the short session is not only the funding that we talked about for the campus in Morganton, but the funding for the campus in Durham as well. And it was alluded to, the $40 million of backlog of our R&amp;R work in the Durham campus. And we have been making some progress on that. In 2015, 17 years, as you can see, we've done about 4.6 million, and that's a combination of a one-time $4 million allocation that helps support the new fiber optic network that has been installed, as well as some of the IBC study upgrades and some of the other things that you see right here, plus some R&amp;R money. But we submitted, as you recall, maybe, in the, for the budget session that we just, I gave you the scorecard on, we had asked for 20 million, 5 million in R&amp;R and 15 in capital project money, which we got 1 million, as you saw. So going forward, we're still working on some, with some funds that we have. We're in the process of doing about 4.2 million in renovations, which is right now our fourth floor physics labs and classrooms has been offline since the summer. We have two, if you've not been to the campus since last May, we have two portable classrooms now in the middle of campus that are there for us to house physics classes and others because they are totally out of their space until the third trimester because it's been totally 100% renovated, just like our engineering class and lab was last year. We're replacing the roof on Hunt Dorm. We're going to be replacing our HVAC systems through a performance contract, which means essentially that we get fronted the money by, in this case, Brady Train, who will do the work and upgrade our systems, and then we pay it back over time from the savings that we will realize from improved efficiency. So it's a way for us, a school like us, to, it's about, that's about close to $4 million worth of improvements to our HVAC systems, not only the mechanical systems, but the control systems as well. And so a way for, we can do that without having to put out $4 million upfront that we don't have, pay it off over time. And then once we pay it off, all the savings accrue back to us from an operating standpoint. And then this summer, we'll be totally renovating one of our three labs on the chemistry floor, one of our three labs on the biology floor, the organic chemistry lab and the biology dissection lab. Part of that is to do, some of it's to do with safety, is ventilation. You know, Ashton can probably tell you about the biology dissection lab space, but the chemistry as well. And so not only replace the ventilation in those, but also replacing the lab benches and all of that as well, so that'll be great improvements to that space. So we are making progress on some of the $40 million worth of backlog, but we're hoping, as we, we've had these conversations as well, and I had some with some of the legislators here yesterday, about by 2021, when we open the campus in Morganton, that's the, the one that we, the ideal version of that, of the option 2 version that we saw today. We also want, at the same time, have dealt with some of the, most of the improvements we need on the Durham campus, which our next areas of need are the ones we listed and asked for money this past time. And you see up here, they're the living space renovations, so we want to renovate the dorm spaces, the flooring. We've been really fortunate, thanks to Terry Lynch's work, to get about $500,000 worth of quote-unquote "new furniture" from Duke University. It's great furniture for our dorms and rooms, and it's new to us, really new to us compared to what we have, but to continue to replace that furniture either through Duke or purchase, but also to totally renovate our bathrooms. I mean, they're long overdue in our dorms, and so to make the living spaces better, and also to replace windows. As you can see, the middle picture there is a sample of the breezeway windows, and, you know, they're, they're way, way, way overdue for being refurbished or replaced, but we need to do it all over campus, and we've seen the difference. We replaced the windows in the engineering suite last year when we renovated. It's a 90-day difference from an efficiency standpoint, as well as the aesthetics of it all. And then also to do some of the renovations to these other areas and some safety and security upgrades on the campus. So nothing that, you know, is as exciting as, as building a brand-new building necessarily, but really important to the school of Durham. So we're along the same line of pursuing the funding for the additional funding needed for Morganton. We're going along that same line, really trying to pursue an equal amount of funding for the Durham campus at that same time. And also, as we move into the capital campaign, that may end up being something that we are also looking to raise pot of money for as well. So we're working, and the goal being 2021, we got two shiny new campuses that everybody's really excited about. And then enrollment growth, I just hit on that, so I won't spend any more time on that one in particular. Rob hit on this a little bit in some of the goals for admissions, but the university system completed a strategic plan really last January, and they're in the implementation phase. And I'll say, just based on the conversation thus far, and at Board of Government meetings, they are going to be very metric-driven in their strategic plan and what they're accomplishing. They're really looking at improving completion, access, and affordability, as well as economic development. And it's hard to see up here, but for your, if you want to receive, read the UNC plan, this is the link that you have available in your materials online. And then this is our full sort of response to the plan. Each campus was asked to look at the system plan and come up with those things that we see as goals for improvement that will tie to the system meeting its goals. So essentially, each camp is doing their part to help drive those improvements system-wide. And so I'm just going to hit on, Rob touched on some of these, but we're not, but this is one of those areas that we're, you know, where we're not exactly, you know, perfect fit for the university system, and we don't have the same goals around completion that they do in terms of those types of things. But there are things that we can do, and one of those is, what Rob just touched on is around enrollment for us and focusing in on rural and low-wealth counties and enrolling students and our underrepresented minority students at the school. And so these were, as Rob said, goals we were working on, but now we've put very specific metrics to that, that, you know, annually, we'll be asked to provide information to the system on how well we're doing in accomplishing these metrics. And so, again, this helps to drive, in the UNC system plan, when you look at it, they have a large focus on rural and low-wealth and underrepresented minority students too, particularly related to completion, and ours is on the front end, getting them in because when we get them in, almost all complete, you know, they do very well, and so it's a positive thing. Rob?
Yeah, and one thing to add is, our database manager, Reubler, has actually put it in so we can track our presentations and how many students we've seen in each of the Tier 1, Tier 2, and Tier counties within our admissions database. So like, anytime we go out, we fill in the numbers, and then that's something we can track and help, you know, keep count of as we're out there visiting schools and visiting different areas of the state.
When you look at the demographics and try to increase, are those two goals consistent or are they?
I would say they're consistent.
I have no idea what the demographics of where the minorities, underrepresented minorities are geographically.
Yeah. Unfortunately, the one thing we find is some of our strongest underrepresented minority students are in some of those most competitive areas.
That wasn't exactly my.
But there are, there are, you know, populations within those low-tier counties too, especially in those schools that like St. John's Church that we're, you know, doubling our efforts in, that could really, you know, hit those populations. And I think, you know, not only building relationships with those counselors and those teachers when we're there too, so then they're, you know, trying to get those students and they're helping those students get to us. We invite a lot of those teachers and counselors to come to campus, whether it's on the selection committee or through other programs. So I think, I don't think they really butt up against each other. I think there's room and both of those for us to.
I'd rather invite it to be big from Wake County and knowing minorities do it. But in Wake County, and it's hard to tell to get excited about applying what the number and the reality is.
You know, we need to get these children when they're really young.
We do, yeah, absolutely. Because there's certainly a disparity between what rural high schools are doing to prepare these children versus the larger urban schools. And if anything, I've become far more aware of that in the last four years since being on this board. I think the other challenge I would put forward, though, is that it's great to enroll them, but can we look at the data of actually keeping these children? Because when Rob was up earlier, you look at the fact that we're enrolling 365 juniors, that would imply a school enrollment of 730 children. However, we have 680, therefore, just anecdotally, we're losing 50 kids. So how does that look?
No, that's not.
How do you do it?
We got, somewhere along the line in the history of the school, it got off. Rob can tell you that. And so it's not that we lost that many students this past year, somewhere along the history. The class previous to that was a, was a low enroll, a low number of students, and it's just a cycle that started somewhere down the line for whatever reason.
It's not happening.
Yeah, no, you can't.
Back to 1988, actually, because that's when they went from that.
Well, and even now, there were 2,000, and then when we went through our period from like 590 to 680, we had like, they renovated some of the spaces, and that's where classes continued.
So can we look at the enrollment, can we see if we're actually able to retain here with demographics? Because it's, you know, it would be really interesting, you know, when you look, I mean, we're working so hard to get these children there, and we want to cultivate them.
Do we know how many we lose?
It's around 5% or 6% is our attrition rate in any given, in any given class. Terry tracks this information, so I think what you'll see is that the students that end up leaving the school are often, you know, that is, 5% or 6% is a lower attrition rate relative to schools like us in the country. And a lot of those students end up leaving more so than not because they make bad decisions, and that may be something that causes them to leave. But Terry could probably add a little color to that.
My three years plus at the school, I typically have one between 15, 20 students withdraw from the school. A subset of that is students who withdraw from the school prior to, you know, significant discipline issues. But then there's another subset that is they would like to return to their home at school or they manage to some level of academic difficulty at the school home placement from an academic post perspective as well. But what I've found is that there's not a larger trend in regards to male versus female or geographic breakdowns in the structure of the form in the three-plus years that I've seen, and then we've actually tripped that data with an art division for the last six or seven years, and I think it's spread out for a variety of different reasons.
And really, if you look at the percentage of students who leave the school who are underrepresented minority, it's a lower percentage than other students at the school. So we can pull the numbers and share. So we can pull the numbers and share, share that information with them.
As an example, in a year like last year, where perhaps you can have two or three Native American students withdraw, it feels like it's a significant number, but it's a higher percentage of the number of people that have that position here. But if you go back for five years, then perhaps that's not the case. So I think some bigger guidance to the data would be helpful, not just on watching and reading, but just how they flourish at the school too. Do rural students get a chance to take upper-level paths, sports, water there, participate in membership at the same level as the TCU or more of a background? And I think we have some of that data that's out there, or we may just sort of be able to collect it and look at it again. But those are things that are just as important as why, watching and reading.
And then I would, to add on to that, is keep in mind that right now, our school is set up to have students come in, at least at Algebra III, and then we'll move on. And even as Rob was saying, the successes that they had this year in getting students that were more diverse from where they came, and expand that as we expand by another 300 students. We got to deal with the students from where they come from academically, as well as culturally, where they come from. And so that will take some time. Math is doing things like having an Algebra III course that is taught alongside a precal course, which still puts an additional burden on the students as far as courses they take, but it gets them caught up to open up access to other courses by the time they reach their senior year. That's an advance they've done, but that isn't necessarily the only solution, but how to make sure that we have enough staff to either be able to treat all the, or teach all those courses we need to, or to re-advant the curriculum in both spaces to really accommodate who is the student population we're bringing in, because you can't just be expanding the students that have already come in so well-prepared, because that's not exactly our mission. It's the students that are going to, that serve and are going to really achieve here. And so finding that mix is going to be interesting for three or four years.
And one thing to know, numbers, is it's not only skewed size-wise and skewed gender. This year, it's a girl year in our process. We have female spaces this year. Last year was a male year, and that gives it back to when Roy was in the desert dorm and when Hunt was renovated this dorm.
And so there may be an opportunity when we bring Morganton campus online to equalize those and to take that opportunity to look at that, because it does, from year to year, if you know, when you're applying, if you're applying in a year where there's more male spaces, it's tough to be a female applicant that year versus the other. So, you know, it would be good to get it back on track. So it's hard to do now, because we would never say, okay, we're going to enroll 20 less kids this year.
Yeah.
But when you open up a new campus, there presents an opportunity to look at that. So we'll take that opportunity. Economic impact and community engagement, this is another one that we felt like we could contribute to, the system-wide plan. This is in our strategic plan already. We have as one of our goals to increase the number of STEM graduates. This is a goal of the system as well. That's really why the UNC system was supportive of the tuition grant, was to, because they know that we graduate a higher percentage of our students with STEM undergrad degrees than the system as a whole or the nation. And so this is kind of a lagging indicator, because, you know, the students are, so we're also looking at metrics that would determine interest in STEM when they come into the school, and then survey them when they leave, and see how that has changed along the way and as a way that we can measure on an annual basis. But the longer-term goal is that, we track this through the National Student Clearing House, how many of our graduates graduate with what degrees when they, when they graduate with their undergraduate and their graduate degrees. So that's a goal that's tied that we can, we can do. And the student success is one that, they may or may not put this, look at this, because it was, they have our student success goal in there, but it's not exactly this. But these are things that we are working on as a part of our strategic plan, improving advising, increasing opportunities for students to have real-world learning experiences, and as we mentioned earlier, the campus climate, culture, diversity, and mental health activities that are happening on campus is a part of our plan. And so those all three, or if you look at the literature, reasons why students persevere and succeed is they have those experiences that they're, that are engaging, and internships and mentorships, the research supports that those keep students persevering in STEM in particular, and then obviously advising and wellness on campus are two big pieces of that as well. So those are, those are the goals that we submitted, each campus had to submit, and what we were going to do. So this is sort of our metrics that will be measured on by the system as we are tying to their strategic plan. And I mentioned ours, these tie, I won't spend much time on these, we've already talked about this some today, but it ties into the system plan, our roles around mental health and that work, which our counseling department has been working really close with student government on this, around mental health. And then we talked a little bit earlier about the Campus Culture, Climate, Diversity Committee, which is a really important work right now. You know, I think every campus, whether it's a high school campus or a university campus in the country now is, there are, it's just a real need to think about how you create the climate on campus that students, all students feel welcome in an open environment, and you can have conversations amongst the folks on campus. And there's not a day that goes by, there was, I was looking at the news this morning, and there was an incident on UNC Charlotte's campus just this, yesterday, and there's, so, you know, and you see what happens in the larger community in the world that's going out in the country that we live in. And so, you know, we have an opportunity to, you know, do our part with 680 students and then our online students every day and each year to help try to create the kind of climate and environment that they can be a part of, where they can then hopefully not only enjoy and benefit from that while they're two years in Durham, but also when they go to the college campus, they can be a part of the leadership in helping to bring about change in the larger communities that they go off to as well. So it's sort of two, two different reasons, both trying to address our own campus climate, making sure it's what we want it to be, but also preparing students for what they're going to be, you know, seeing and being a part of when they head off to university. And then one thing just to mention, just wanted to put this out there, we are in the accreditation process this, this year. It's more than a year, but every five years, a team from Advance Ed, which is, you know, our version of the Saks group that come to visit the school and accredit that. And there's been a lot of work that's been done over the past six months, and a whole group of people just went to Greensboro to hear more about it, and Dr. O'Connor and a large group of people are involved in this on campus in gathering feedback and information from parents, from students, writing a report, and a visiting team will be coming in March to spend two days on campus to see if what we submitted is true or not. You know, they come and say, you know, verify that what we told them is happening, is happening on campus. And so we're looking forward to that visit. Katie or Andy, anything to say about that?
Yeah, we just got back from Greensboro, and they, because of the five-year cycle, our school happens to land always in year one where they change the process. And so we, the year before that happens, we're always waiting to see what the new standards are, the new surveys, and so we have to, you know, have our act together really quickly. And the team, our group has done an excellent job. We did a lot of work over the summer as well. So one thing that I really love about the new changes this time is that it's an improvement journey instead of an event-based journey. And so they're really looking at what we do already with our strategic plan, which is like advising, I'll give you as an example. You know, we've had collected data about the advising, we've tried some new things to collect the data about that, then we've changed things again, and that's what they're looking for. Like, are we constantly trying to improve? And so I think that will fit with what we do really well. And so we are looking forward to our visit, six people from their team visiting our campus over those two days. Because we are, this year is, like I said, it's the first cycle of the new way. They typically have 120 schools that are being accredited during a year, and this year it's only 40. And they're, they've been very, very helpful. Like, they want us to call the district office with every question we have, because it is the first year, so we are going to be pioneers through this process. And they've been, you know, very accommodating to our, to our school. They certainly know who we are. So, yeah.
I would say, you know, the last visitation, I think, was kind of underwhelming, I think, to the board and their understanding, the visiting team's understanding of really what our school was. Maybe their continuous improvement of their continuous improvement model will be helpful, but it probably wouldn't hurt for the board to be able to read the last report from the last cycle and kind of see what was in there and review that, so.
Yeah, and one thing too, we brought a team to the conference last year, and then the director of this, Donna James, she actually came to visit with the team a couple months ago, just so we could give them a view, since our school is so unique. And we wanted to make sure that the online and IDC piece was being looked at too, because I think, I wasn't here at the last visit, but my understanding is maybe they didn't look at the online piece as much, and that's just a part of our school as well. So they will be doing that this time.
That's great.
And so we definitely have made some strides in helping them understand how unique our situation is, to the point where I think they're going to pick carefully the six people they're sending us.
That would be good.
Because we have the residential piece along. We've got, our team includes student life, deep, and academic programs.
Great.
Yeah, I think this process is a better process altogether, but I think we'll be more closely aligned with our school, for sure.
How's the process with, with Central and NC State? Are you guys going to have some of the first students meet with them? That's typically what they request.
Yeah, and they'll, they'll, it's similar to the processes at the university with the Saks process. It's a little different, but they will want to meet with, they will request who they want to speak with, and I'm sure they'll be, yeah, yeah. So that, that whole, they'll visit a lot of classrooms, they'll meet with different groups of stakeholders, and so that's all part of the process. That was sort of the process last time. Then they'll come actually, give a report to, they give, they report out to the whole school. They have a session where they report out to whoever wants to come to a session about what they, what they found and so forth, and they submit a written report as well. Thank you, Katie, for that. And then one of the last couple of things is, and I just brought this to your attention because it is the first time ever, you know, we're 38 years old, and best as anybody can tell, there's nothing archived, and the music folks don't know anything about it, the school's never had an alma mater. And so last year, yeah, last year, a student from our student, student government took it, you know, said, okay, we want an alma mater. And so Gio Leoni and student government met with our music folks in September and put forth a competition and communicated it out, and anybody could submit, alumni, students, parents, random folks could submit for the alma mater, and they had that. And then they finished up with their work, and they will be debuting this at Alumni Weekend at the concert on Friday night, and then again at the meeting. So I'm going to share with you, you can see the committee, there were students involved, there was our music, our whole fine arts team was involved in the selection. And so all of the submissions were blindly judged, so no names were attached, they, the committee judged those. I think we had about nine or 10 submissions, and lyrics and the melody to go along with it as well. And so the lyrics are here, as you can see. And as I did, I guess I should have known this, I've heard, you know, these things a lot, that like, like sort of the National Anthem, you don't, in the performance, it's never really the whole thing. There's like six verses or something like that, and so usually there's a verse that's the one that's, the one when they perform. And so I believe that they've, they've settled on the first verse will be the one. And there's a link, I'm going to, hopefully it'll work, it's, you'll be the, you'll be actually the very first people to ever hear it. But we have a real treat here, because it just so happens that the, the, one of the authors of the alma mater happens to be in the room.
Oh, wow.
Emily Martin. So Emily can tell you this story, but this was a family affair, and she's a family of unicorns over there, and even, even an extended unicorn family participated in this. And again, it was blindly, blindly judged, and it just so happens, it's a perfect time, and it's also perfect because her husband, Michael, who's also an alumni, just happens to be his reunion weekend, so it'll be, be pretty cool for him. So Emily, what would you like to share about this?
Thank you, Todd. We really enjoyed writing this. It was a multi-generational Martin family endeavor. My husband and I are both alums, we're parents of a senior at the school this year, and none of us are composers, but we knew we had something to say about our school. It's very difficult to get the name of the school in a song. So we kind of knew early on, we wanted it to be about what accepting the greater challenge means kind of at different stages of life. When you're first coming to NCSSM upon graduation, and then later looking back. And actually, one of my favorite lyrics is, whatever we have to give was honed within that brief time. So my 13-year-old son wrote the melody, I kind of helped him with the chord progression. My mother, Janet Fox, who's, she used to be an education reporter, but she's written a lot of stuff, really did most of the lyrics. I kind of had the structure, you know, I gave her the syllables, and she wrote it out. So I think none of us could have done it alone, we all worked on it together. And my son, who I think is watching this on livestream, cannot wait to hear it performed by actual musicians.
So here we go. And I think that there'll be a full orchestral version and the choral doing this on Friday on the weekend, but hopefully this will work. This is a smaller sample.
And you will send those who are not going to make it to the alumni weekend a link, so we can stream it?
Yes, we will, I hope they're, I don't know if they'll be streaming it, but there'll be video for sure.
Use your ringtone. I want that ringtone for sure.
You may have to hear it from my machine here. Hopefully. You can't see it there. but it's in the presentation that Alma Mater is the.
Yeah, I can help with that.
The Alma Mater is the link, where it says Alma Mater is the link, and you can actually watch the YouTube video of the performance. And then lastly, this past Friday, we had a great NCSSM, NCSTEM Hall of Fame Gala. This was a first-time gala event for us, and the sort of inauguration of the NCSTEM Hall of Fame. And you can see the four honorees up there, the Burris Welcome Fund, on your left, that's John Burris, the president, and they're more honored for their amazing contribution to STEM education in the state, as well as early career scientists. And they are the largest single private supporter of NCSSM in our history, with more than $3 million given to support the school. Maya Jamara, who's class of 85, is on the top right, as you can see. You all know Maya, she's a board member, and finished her term last year and has had amazing, varied career. The bottom left is Jody Simone, who's coming up to accept the award, and those of you who might not know Joe, Joe was on our foundation board for a period of time, but he is an amazing scientist, chemist, eminent professor, something, something at State and Carolina, and also a very successful entrepreneur as well. And so he was honored, and I learned something here the first, first time I heard this about him, and his first PhD student is Valerie Ashby, who's now the dean of Trinity College at Duke University. And she said that, that he's one of only 20 people in the history that have been elected to all three societies that, I won't know them off the top of my head, but there's to all three societies that, I don't know them off the top of my head, but there's the Society for, you know, Science Medicine and whatever, I don't know the name of all.
Chemistry, yeah.
National Academies for all, three different national academies. And he's the only person in, one of 20 people in history that have been selected to all three of those academies, so it's pretty amazing. And then lastly, in the far right, as you know, that's Governor Hunt, who has done a lot for STEM and certainly our school. And they all were, gave very gracious and unbelievably great acceptance speeches, particularly as it related to NCSSM. And this event was really the idea of Brad and Debra Ives, who are Brad's alum at School 82, who's a member of the foundation board, actually Paige's brother. And they did an unbelievable job along with Brock and the institutional advancement team of pulling this together. Each time, the first time you do something is, you never know how it's going to turn out, you never know how much work it actually is to do it. And so Brock can, at this point Brock can really tell you how much work was to do this, but it was exceeded expectations in every way. I mean, we had, we're hoping when we first did this to have, to plan this to have 200 people attend. We had 300 people attend. We were hoping that we might raise $100,000 from sponsors. We raised more than $150,000 from sponsors. And for those of you, many folks in the room who were at the event, it was a really fantastic evening. And, you know, and it exceeded all of our expectations. Brock, I don't know if you want to say anything to this, but, but again, Brock and Debra in particular did an amazing amount of work to make this event, really a huge, huge success. He's still recovering. But it really was fabulous, fabulous event, with great energy in the room and, you know, couldn't have been any better. So thanks for all of you who came and sponsored the event and we had a lot of old friends there and then we had a lot of new friends as well, which was, which was, which was great. So that really concludes my report and want to again thank all of you for your work for our school and the new members who are just joining. I hope today was educational for you and also hope it was an opportunity to, to see the quality of focus that you're working with on, on the board here. And we're happy to have all of our new members. As is the case, the diversity on the board brings a lot of perspective to help us out and we appreciate your willingness to serve. And again, in particular, thanks for helping make the first meeting here in Morganton a huge success. Again, as was mentioned earlier by Stephanie, I believe, you know, this is the first meeting in Morganton, many more to come. And I think it was, again, a transformational day for the school in many ways. And I think you're, you're serving on this board at a time really over the next four years between what's happening in Morganton, the Capitol Campaign, what's going to be launching, has, you know, will, will really change the trajectory of this institution. And we appreciate your leadership and support in helping, helping us make sure we do well. And that, I know we will. So thank you again for your time and your service.
Thank you, Chancellor. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, I think we want to give the Chancellor, the staff, all of our constituent groups, the Alumni Association, Foundation Board, Parent Advisory Group, Student Government Association, let's give them a round of applause. And to our community hosts that have been just phenomenal really since the very beginning of the way they've embraced the school, embraced our current students and staff and future, they've just been tremendous and great things to come. Marjorie, we're not saying goodbye, we're saying we'll see you soon. We appreciate Tom Looney stepping in to complete your term as vice chairman. He'll do a fabulous job. And I think from the trustees' perspective, the new opportunity, the new challenges of what was approved today with the academic vision, the site development, the infrastructure of the facility, committee chairs, it's important for us to assess our policy responsibilities and be thinking about what are the opportunities within our policies that can be more innovative, more supportive, more aligned with what's becoming an institution with one school, two campuses, as well as our DEEP program and our IBC program and outreach. So keep in mind the policy side of that as you, as you see things so that when we come back to our next quarterly meetings and our committee work in between, we're prepared to help support what the school needs from a policy perspective as well as helping them secure the kind of resources that we're going to need to make it a great experience for all of our students now and for years to come. Delighted to see everybody here today. Other than that, Mr. Chancellor, I would be ready to entertain a motion to adjourn unless there are comments from other folks.
I would allow, like, to see Marjorie have the, or making that last adjournment.
Oh, my crap. I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Seconded by Alan. All those in favor say aye. Please travel safely. Thank you all.
Not too far. Okay.